Hello and welcome to the secret component of the planning commissioner training. My name is Marty and I'm with a company called placeworks. And I'll be guiding you through today's recorded obsession so that you can get an understanding of where we go with the California environmental quality act. And how we process projects under the act in the state of California. Little bit of background sequel, which is the abbreviation for the California environmental quality act. Was signed into law by Governor Reagan in nineteen seventy. It is based loosely on the environmental bill of rights. It was a federal action that led to NIPA. Sequel originally only applied to governmental agencies. It was intended to make sure that large public works projects. Took into account the impact on the environment and in some cases, the community within which they were to be located. The Friends of Mammoth case in nineteen seventy two made sequel applied everybody. For better or for worse, unfortunately, the act itself was never amended. To take out some of the components that really only apply to public projects. There've been several workarounds over the years and we'll get to some of that as we go through today's session. The map, the act does get amended from time to time and I put the amendments on here. Really, the purpose of this slide is to show you that there is a long history of sequel compliance in California. And that it does apply to every discretionary action. Like any other. Practice, there is a set of jargon and terminology that is different from real world English. And here I've put on this slide and it's available in the download. Some key terms that you'll hear from time to time, both in this presentation and in your review of environmental documents provided by your staff. Baseline exemptions speculation. These are all terms that you'll find in the narrative and in the discussion of the documents. And they have specific definitions in the context of sequel. No quiz on this at the end of the session, but it's something you should familiarize yourself with. And we have some resources at the end of the presentation to help you do that. The first and most important concept of sequence to understand that it only applies to discretionary projects. Ministerial projects are those things that have no personal judgment or are based on objective standards essentially do this, you get a permit. Sequel doesn't apply. Now, when I say that, it's important to understand that there are environmental protection laws that are not triggered by sequel. We just conveniently put them in the sequel process as we're evaluating project. An example of that might be the endangered species act. It's a federal piece of legislation that covers certain things migratory birds, for example, are protected under a federal act. Wetland protection is federal. None of those are sequoia specific, meaning that even if you have a ministerial project, you still need a wetland permit. You still need a survey for certain types of birds, those types of things. But in general, if it's a ministerial. Act like a building permit issuance or a grading permit that has followed certain concepts within your law. It doesn't trigger sequel. Discretionary acts are those where you have the ability to say no or to say yes with conditions. One implies the other. It has the ability to use judgment. Essentially, you'll see discretionary acts before the commission. Most ministerial acts never get to the commission because they're handling the calendar. A mixed decision is one that has some discretionary action and some ministerial action. In that case, we always defer to the entire project is discretionary. And then it goes through the environmental process and you get to act on it as a commission. Once we have a project and let's talk a little bit about what a project is. So we know that it's discretionary. We know that the planning commission has the discretion to act or to put conditions on the project. We then have to determine the level of environmental review. Now, the project is the entirety of the project, not just the little site plan that you're often given. If they need to bring a sewer line or a water line or power or they need to extend a roadway. Those are all parts of the project and included in the environmental analysis. But once we have that project, we have to decide whether it's exempt from sequel. Whether it can be handled with a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration, and I'll explain that in a minute. Or requires an environment impact report. There are reasons to choose one or the other based on the impact of the project. But there are also reasons based on your protection should the project be litigated. The two protections for litigation are substantial evidence and fair argument. Now substantial evidence is a pretty high bar. What that means is that in order for somebody to challenge the assertions of an agency. They have to provide their own technical analysis. Now, this can be expensive, right? If you've done an entire traffic study or you've done a biological survey. You need to have another biological survey or traffic survey done to challenge that. It's a very high bar. A fair argument standard only requires that somebody with a little bit of knowledge, maybe it's local knowledge, maybe they're a gifted amateur. Come up and say, I don't agree with the conclusions. A per argument would be, I do not believe that this conclusion follows the evidence he provided in the record. That often is soon enough significant enough to push this into an EIR. Now, the reason that's important is this stuff takes time. It takes time to do the studies. It takes time to write the documents. So if you've taken the six to eight months, it takes to write an initial study. And then the year or so it takes for challenge, then you get in front of the court and the court says, hey, you should have done an EIR. You've lost all that time. If you do an EIR. You still have the time. It takes a little longer to write an EIR about a year or so, a little over a year. Depending on the studies. You, you take some time to do this, then you get to court and the guy goes, hey, where's your technical study to challenge this particular project? It's a different level and you may not get any gains by saving time at the front end versus long end. Now, I'm letting you know this because a lot of times planning commissioners get asked questions by developers and by the public, why one thing or the other was done. Most of these decisions are made long before it gets to the planning commission. These are made at the counter often during the application is internal processing. Often made by staff or sometimes by the attorneys representing the applicant. Or sometimes the city attorney will say that this project warrants an EIR right off the bat or a neg debt would be adequate. As you can see exemptions oddly enough are in fact under the substantial evidence category. You will see this in your staff report. There are some exceptions to exemptions. There's statutory exemptions and categorical exemptions and we'll talk a little bit about that. There's a whole host of different kinds of EIRs. And then an addendum to an EIR gets the same level of protection as the entire document. And this is one of the reasons you're starting to see a proliferation of addendums with certain types of projects. If you have an EIR that covered the original project and you're making a minor change to that project. The addendum may well be able to cover that change and you still get the substantial evidence level of protection. Ironically, you still have to have substantial evidence to write the addendum. So if you're doing an addendum to a negative declaration, for example, you've done all the work, but you don't get the substantial evidence level of protection. You only get fair argument because that's what the original document had. So exemptions. These are what every developer hopes you will say at the counter. This is something that everybody likes because what it says is you're done with sequel. Right? It doesn't mean that sequel doesn't apply. It means that there are specific provisions of sequel that have been baked into the law. That say, we're okay with this amount of impact. So a statutory exemption is something that the legislature has simply decreed by law. Is not, is no law or a project does not qualify for sequel. Examples include some sort of pipeline projects. They're listed in sequel, by the way. You can also see the nineteen eighty four Olympics, for example, was exempt from sequel. A categorical exemption. Is one that is exempt from sequel. If it meets certain criteria, if it doesn't violate an endangered species, if it doesn't. Results in. Impacting the hazardous area. We call those exceptions and those are listed specifically in the CIPA guidelines. What you'll see in your staff report for an exemption sometimes is here's the categorical exemption. And here's why this particular project applies. There's no hazardous materials. There's no endangered species or wetlands, those types of things. It's not a historic structure. All of those things will be listed as long as it meets those criteria and you have evidence demonstrating that it meets the criteria. Then it qualifies as a categorical exemption. Now, the last one is the general exemption known as the common sense exemption. And yes, there's a provision of law that says common sense. And I'll leave your own judgment on whether that's actually real. But in terms of the common sense exception, what we're saying is if it can be seen unequivocally. That there is unlikely to be substantial. Impact to the environment that sequel doesn't apply. Sequel is only looking at physical changes on the environment. And only those things that are significant. So in this particular case, if you can demonstrate that it isn't going to result in a change in the environment, you can use this particular exemption. It's fifteen oh six oh C. Up until a few years ago, this wasn't used very often because it's essentially saying, yeah, we don't care. And in some context, that's a, that's a tough thing to defend and a lot of city attorneys and county councils were not happy with that. The courts have seen however, that this is a useful tool for certain policy documents. Certain things that are, are just changing words on a page that don't really have a direct impact on the environment. Or for which sequel will ultimately apply anyway. And we don't have enough information today. So the common sense exemption. Is starting to be used. It's still relatively rare, but you may run into. A mitigated negative declaration or a negative declaration. The only difference is the mitigation measures. Is something that's sort of the next level past the exemption. So this is one where there might be some changes we need to make to the project in order to consider approval. We use something called appendix G of the guidelines and I would encourage you to take a look at it. You've probably seen this in your packet or it's a part of your city's normal procedures. There's a list of questions. They're not mandated by the state. It's an example. In fact, the guidelines themselves suggest that your agency adopt its own. Thresholds and its own checklist, but most people fall to the appendix G guidelines in which you have the resources to do your own. Please check your agency because you may have them and they may be different than your adjacent agency or your neighbor down the road. Each of the questions has to be answered and each of the questions has to be supported by substantial evidence. Now, that doesn't mean you have a report for every question in the checklist. It means that you have some analysis or you can point to other analysis that supports the conclusion such as your general plan. Or your zoning code or your design standards or some other document that you've adopted that regulates land use. This gets circulated for thirty days. Yes, it can be circulated for shorter, but most people just go with thirty days. The public can comment. Now, interestingly enough, you're not required to respond to the comments, but there's only a handful of agencies that I'm aware of. That don't respond to comments in a formal manner. Most of us respond to the comments. For the obvious reason that if the public's taking its time to comment, then the agency should take its time to respond. It's considered a draft until the commission acts on it. That means that even though we've put all the work into it, even though we've got all the technical studies, if you're not happy with it. You need to tell your staff and the staff will then have to take appropriate actions. This is important to understand because so many commissioners and so many of the public believe. That if it's, you know, six hundred page document with findings and appendices and whole areas, then it's fully baked and I have no ability to change it. That's simply not true. As the lead agency and as the deciding authority for that lead agency, we're providing text to you. You evaluate it to determine whether or not it's acceptable for you to make that decision. The platinum level, the, the highest level of environmental analysis that we can do is an environmental impact report. Now, there are several different types as you saw a list earlier. They're all about the same. What varies and the reason that they have these different labels is sometimes we don't have all the information. Sometimes we're also adopting something that we know later on will have more environmental analysis. A good example would be your general plan. The general plan is typically what they call a programmatic document. That means that we don't know everything about everywhere in our community. But we know that we have procedures in place to address most of the normal. Activities that come out of a construction project. So dust and noise and odor. And access, all of those things we have procedures for either in ordinances or design standards. And we can apply them generally through the project. So through the general plan area. Where we, we fall short in a programmatic document, for example, is I don't know. Whether this particular site has a wetland on it or it has an endangered species or there's a sensitive receptor. And so we. Put a program in place to look at those when an application comes in. And we have a separate action later on. Those are called programs. That program would be to do your evaluation, prior divisions of the building permit, those types of things. A project level document is much, much more refined because we have all the information we need for that particular site or sites. And we have the detailed information necessary to issue a permit. It's really the only fundamental difference. All of them follow the same basic format. They have the regulatory program. They have an environmental setting. They have a number of thresholds loosely based on appendix G, but also on your general plan and other things. It's circulated for thirty days as a notice of preparation, which is a slim document that simply says we're doing an EIR. Then forty five days for the EIR itself, we call it the draft EIR. Comments that come in during that forty five day period must be responded to individually and with respect. In the final EIR in response to comments. So everything there is still a draft until it is certified either by the commission or the council or the board. However, it's set up in your agency. One of the most important things you can do as a commissioner is take a look at how your agency is set up for those decisions. You'll find that in your codes or ordinances or by talking to your planning director. So let's move on to the analysis. This is the content that you see within the document itself. So I mentioned that it has an environmental setting and you know, the setting for most EIRs is what's on the ground today. What, what is it that you have today that you will be changing with this project? Because the EIR evaluates change or the environmental analysis evaluates that change. So if it's a parking lot today and it's going to be a parking lot tomorrow. Odds are there's no change. There's no physical change in the environment. It's still paved. It still has lighting. It's still some shrubbery. At the end of the day, there's really not much changing between the two parking lots. If however, it's a parking lot today and tomorrow it's going to be a shopping center with parking lot. We've added a shopping center. We need to evaluate that. So the critical path here, the critical thing that we look at is what is baseline? Baseline is typically what's there today. What is your, what is your, what even measured today? So if you're doing a noise measurement, for example, what's the ambient noise? If you're doing a traffic study, what's the traffic you have today? If you're doing a biological study, what is the biological status of that site? Are there bugs and bunnies out there? Are there flowers? That will all be in the environmental document and or the technical appendices that support it. That becomes your baseline. Now, there are rare circumstances where the baseline may be a future condition. So for example, if there is a freeway overpass being constructed. Or in the, in the beginning stages of being constructed. And you're doing a project next to it. Your baseline may be what it looks like after that gets constructed. Those will be really rare. It's high level stuff. It's generally frowned upon in the environmental community. And even if you do have a future baseline, often the current condition, the current baseline is also there. But I just want you to be aware that there are circumstances where there may be a different baseline that will be evaluated against. So once we have a baseline. We have to figure out if it's going to change, how much change is really important. Is this significant? And you'll see the word significance. Sequel folks don't even use significant enough, right? The word significant is important because in our world, that means it's an issue that needs to be addressed. Now, the roots of it are in the appendix G guidelines, but you'll also find thresholds and other documents, including your general plan. Your general plan may have noise standards in it that aren't existing in the appendix G guidelines. But they may be in your noise zones may say not above sixty five, not above eighty during certain times. You'll also find it your municipal code that may have a lighting standard in it that says somebody candle foot. You'll also see it in adopted development standards. There may be a standard that you've adopted in your community that says no pink roofs. And if you are in the aesthetic section of your document, that is a standard. Is the roof pink? Yes or no? If it's yes, then you may have to change. You may have to have a mitigation measure to change it. Or you may have to say that it's never going to be another color but pink and we'll deal with that and I'll explain how you do that in the section. Couple of other things you need to understand about. Thresholds, first of all, varies by agency. Every agency is free to and should adopt their own thresholds of significance. I've worked in communities where a drive through. And a fast food restaurant required an environmental impact report. I've also worked in agencies where that's a counter permit. You can just get a building permit as long as you meet the standards. So every agency is different. Where you live matters and the importance of. The environmental importance of the folks that live in that community dictate what the threshold is. And it can even vary by location within your community. A threshold for noise, for example, is going to be much lower in an area with homes and hospitals and libraries and schools. Then it will be in an area that is designed for industrial use that has trucks and forklifts and manufacturer going up. So your noise impact may change depending on where you are in your community, what you're adjacent to. The nice thing for you as a commissioner. All of this needs to be explained in your document. This will all be documented and you'll be able to see the breadcrumbs that go through to follow through the analysis. So as I mentioned back in our discussion. If you have a threshold in your general plan, this is no pink roofs and somebody comes in and they want to do a pink roof. Then you have a situation where you may need to mitigate the project. Now, absolutely. So that's an absurd. Example, but it's pretty simple for our consideration. There are some things you need to know about mitigation measures. First of all. There are laws that you adopt as part of the project that are specific and unique to that project. So what that means is you shouldn't be applying a law as a mitigation measure because it already applies. It should be something unique. The next thing you need to know is that you have to identify this as a significant impact in the environmental analysis. Sequel doesn't give you any powers that you don't already possess as an agency. So if you couldn't apply this mitigation measure through a condition of approval. You cannot apply it through secret. It doesn't give you any new authority. So you can, however, in our example, as a planning commission decide that pink roofs shall not be permitted in your community. And you could have a mitigation measure. It says the project's approved, provided the color of the roof is any color but pink. I would suggest you want to be more precise with that in mitigation measure. Blue, black, yellow, whatever color you choose needs to be specified in the mitigation measure. The next thing you need to make sure of is that you can enforce the mitigation measure. Now, this always gets to be a little interesting because. We like to be able to think that we have control over our environment, particularly as a city. Cities and counties have the most police power of any agency in the state. And they like to think that they can do things. So for example, say you need to put a traffic signal in at. Intersection of a Caltrans facility and a city facility. Even if that's a mitigation measure and ordinarily you'd be able to do this. In reality, you don't have the authority to install the mitigation on the Caltrans facility. If in fact, you had all of the money today without permission of the state through Caltrans, you would not be able to install that, that condition. Same goes for wetlands. Take permits, which is a permit to allow you to take an endangered species or the habitat for a species. Any of these things that require permit from another agency are outside of your jurisdiction. And so therefore they're not enforceable. You can't force them to do something. And as I mentioned, each mitigation measure must be related specifically to the environmental impact. So should be. The baseline. The threshold. An analysis of how the project is above or below that threshold. Now, if it's below the threshold, no mitigation can be mandated through sequel. If it's above the threshold, then you can mitigate to the level of the threshold, not to zero, but to the level of threshold. And so I have this handy dandy picture that frankly should be. Put in front of every sequel practitioners cubicle. Because this really identifies what is and isn't possible through sequel to evaluate. So on the left you have the proposed action and you can see that it's above the action will result in impacts that are above the threshold of significance for that community. When you've mitigated or you've added the mitigation measure, say you've in our case, say that line represents no pink roofs. And the project has a pink roof, then we mitigate it to say you shall have a green roof. And with the green roof, it's below the threshold. Again, I apologize for simplicity, but without a bunch of technical studies, that's probably the best I can come up with. The mitigation target, as you can see with the big blue arrow is to the threshold of significance, not to zero. Now, recent legislation has confused quite a bit of this. The climate action planning and greenhouse gas reductions and even VMT. Have started to try to backpedal a little bit on this. But this process and this mitigation strategy has been the law of California almost since the beginning of sequel. Certainly since the mammoth case that we started with the beginning of the presentation. So for now, this is a good guide for you. It may change in the future, but for now, let's leave it at this. So the environmental analysis has to have substantial evidence. In this case, the reason I have this slide is I want to show you that some of these. Studies take a while and that is why. When you go to the supermarket and somebody asks why that Costco hasn't been built. Or such project hasn't been able to go forward. It's because the studies haven't been done. This is what we would constitute the substantial evidence needed to support an environmental conclusion. Be it for the mitigated negative declaration or for the EIR. So as you can see, column A, these are things that are often submitted with the application materials. That can deal with aesthetics, geo and soils, hazards, land use, those types of things are simple. They're objective and you can see them right away. Column B often has to deal with both elements of the project and in some cases. Study results of those in column A. And column C often need things from column B and column A. Some of these studies can only be done at certain times. So for example, biological resources. If you live in the desert, you can't look at that in the summertime. You have to look at that in the spring or the fall when creatures are active or plants are starting to, to grow. Ironically, cultural resources, you want to look at them in the winter or the summer, depending on the climate, because vegetation is less and you can actually see more that might be on the ground. Transportation impacts. It's important for schools to be in session. If it's a weekend project, are there fares around? I mean, there are certain protocols. That go in with each of these studies, which dictates when they can occur. The full gambit of studies that you see here can take the better part of a year to complete properly. To be evaluated by the agency and to be ready to be put into environmental document. The only importance for you as a commissioner understand is this is why an application comes in and two years later, it's finally before you. These studies had to be completed. Relatively new to the environmental world, there's something we call project design features. Now, the environmental community has made its changes even in the development world. Gone are the days where the developer just comes in and scrapes the land clean and builds things. Many of the developers now are much more attuned to the environmental impacts that they bring and have design projects around them. An example would be avoiding a wetland. To not have to get a wetland permit. Or avoiding an endangered species to not have to get an endangered species permit. These are, these are sensible actions, not only from the time it takes to get those permits, but the cost it takes to get those permits. And plus the public reaction to the fact that you're going to fill a wetland or take an endangered species. So they build into the project. Elements that avoid these things or that address them right up front. We call those project design features. Now. I tend to be pretty draconian about these. I don't necessarily trust them. And I certainly don't trust them to be there when the project actually gets built. So I like to build them into what we call the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And certainly into the conditions of approval. And the reason for that is it's often the entitlement team that comes in agrees to everything in order to get the project through. Much like the planning department works through everything with the, with the entitlement team. And then the building team deals with the building department that may or may not have had anything to do whatsoever. With the entitlement and they may not be aware of these features and they may be willing to change things because it makes sense to them. But they may not understand that, oh no, the reason we don't have the road here is we didn't want to cross this creek. That's why it's over there. And yes, they have to put in more pavement to do that. Or they have to put in a, a bridge to avoid the wetland. But that was done for a reason. So we make sure we build those project design features into the conditions of approval. And ultimately into the mitigation and monitoring program. I bring it up here because you'll start to see more of this and it's a good thing that, that the development community is starting to be more environmentally conscious about these things. And build the solutions into the project. But this should be talked about in the analysis of the document. And then ultimately in the part of the document that helps the project get constructed. And we've talked about a mitigation measure and this is a little chart that we use to determine when a mitigation measure is appropriate. First, we try to avoid or minimize the impact. Then we try to fix it through a project design feature or some other means. We reduce or eliminate the impact and ultimately compensate. Generally, paying a fee to solve a problem is the very last resort. And from a public agency standpoint, you almost never get enough money to solve the problem. And, and this has been true, not for the last decade, but probably for the last several millennia that we've had cities. Paying the fees essentially kicking the can down the road and most agencies do it very reluctantly. Now, there are times when it's appropriate, like for example, you're building a house. You're one one thousandths of an impact of a new interchange. You know, it's kind of harsh to have you build a new interchange with your house. So there's a reason for them, but they should be scrutinized. And it should be very well thought out in the plan and as part of your administrative record. Occasionally, we have impacts that cannot be mitigated to less than significant. If you remember the graphic, that pink line. What if you couldn't get below that? What if the only color roof in the world was pink? And you have a threshold that says no paint roofs. Are you at an M pass? And you have a threshold that says no paint roofs, are you at an impasse? Well, if you're doing a negative declaration, yeah, you're pretty much stuck. If you're doing any IR, you can do what's called a statement of overriding considerations. Now, that doesn't mean you can just throw up your hands and say, well, we can't fix the problem, so therefore we don't care. What it means is that you first have to go through all the feasible mitigation. And then, once you've completed all the feasible mitigation. And none of it works and you have to have substantial evidence to explain why none of it works. Then the city or the county can say the benefits of this project, be it jobs. Be it's fixing a problem that's been in the community for decades, whatever is listed. You can override the impacts, but you can only do that with an EIR and you must have substantial evidence in order to fix that problem. I'll also suggest to you, and, and this is something that, that you hear a lot, is I'll issue to an EIR for this project and that'll kill it. In fact, an EIR is intended specifically to allow you as the agency to decide to approve a project regardless of impacts. And that's usually a shock to a lot of folks that want to use the EIR as a means of stopping something, when in fact, yes, it's more expensive. And certainly, it's more time consuming. But at the end of the day, it gives you the agency the most flexibility. That you have at any point in the process to say yes or no, based on the merits of the project. And I would suggest to you to take one thing away from this is that the EIR is not the project. The project is the project. The EIR is simply a piece of information that helps you make that decision. Now, the courts will talk to you about showing your work and you'll hear that a lot, both from planners and from the court and from people. And what they really mean is, explain to me how you got to that conclusion. Our good attorney friend of mine says, we're doing this because, and he wants to know what's after the because. And in this particular case, we use something called the finding. Now with an initial study negative deck or, or mitigated negative declaration, this will often be in the resolution. It'll explain a few things, we typically write our documents to lead you to these conclusions. And then for an EIR, there will be specific examples of findings. And this is one here, you know, traffic on roads can increase noise. Compliance with the mitigation measure reduce or has a ball that will reduce the noise by the requisite amount. At the end of the day, it is below the threshold. It's all you need to know. And you will do that in an EIR in multiple pages for each impact determination. What I would suggest to you as a commissioner is read the findings first. Take a look at the findings to see how they've solved the problem because that will help you when you read the rest of the document. Now, I mentioned the statement of already considerations. This means that after we've done all of this impressive work, you've got all this technical analysis, we still have an impact that we cannot reduce to less than significant. So the statement of already consideration is usually the last two or three or four pages of your findings, which can be hundreds of pages. And those last three or four pages, the agency asserts itself and says, yes, we know we're going to cause this impact. However, at the end of the day, we believe these benefits that come from the project override the impact to the environment. Now, you can see here that needs to be supported by substantial evidence. I would suggest to you that we're going to make money isn't enough of a reason. And this harkens back to the days when this was predominantly a government required environmental document or, or you only applied to government projects. The courts take a dim view on, well, we're going to get sales tax, we're going to build this Costco, we're going to fill this lake, build this Costco so we can make more money. Probably not alone. Attorneys that I work with suggest that you list as many. Statements of override as you feel appropriate for the project. And the reason for that is if the court decides one of them. Is not adequate, isn't a good enough reason to override the environment. Well, at that point, if they, if that's the only one you have, you have no override and everything starts to fall apart. If on the other hand, it's one of five or six or one of a dozen that you've put into the record. You have the ability at that point to lose that one and still make it work. The, the court's only looking for one overriding consideration that is appropriate, so it's best to have multiple. Much like the EIR and the initial study and whatnot are not done until the planning commission has acted upon it. The findings aren't done until the board or the commission or the council have acted upon it. So if you're reading the document and you think, well, this is a really great project, I'm really glad it's solving this issue. If it doesn't show up in the findings. Tell your staff, call your planning director and say, hey, what about this is another finding or support for a running consideration? I've been at meetings where the public has come up with reasons why this is a really good project. Yes, I know, that's a shock, right? Mostly they show up and tell you that why you shouldn't approve the project. But in this case, this is the last chance you have to add evidence to the record to suggest why this is a good idea. Often in findings, I'll see fiscal analyses, I'll see jobs reports, I'll see things that don't typically end up in the EIR. Or in the environmental record, but instead end up in the findings because it's appropriate to the discussion and to the reason why you're approving the project. So we're going through some additional resources for you on, on these things and. This is for housing, you'll see a lot of housing information here, there've been a lot of laws of late. That address the environmental impacts of housing and how to streamline approval of housing. Both the reasons for and how to do that. In fact, they, they've pretty much revamped a large portion of Sequo for certain types of housing, especially affordable housing. A lot of that information you will find here. I always like to give a plug for ILG's planning commissioner handbook, in part because I helped edit it. But also because it's a wonderful resource for planning commissioners to give you information on definitions of terms, on how Sequo works. On current projects of the day, current topics, those types of things. It's organized as an online resource, so you can get to it from your phone, your iPad, your computer. And I do believe that ILG has a version of it that you could download in print if you were so inclined. And last but by no means least, you need to know that on the internet, there are a whole host of resources that are available to you and to the public. On getting information about what we're talking about. Very last, one of these, we need the California Environmental Quality Act, all the guidelines are on the OPR website, that's Office of Planning and Research. One of the nice things about that is there's something called Sequinet, which I think is on here, it's the very last one. Sequinet is where we put our documents. Now, in the last five years, OPR has been requiring us to upload digital versions of our documents. So if you are in your community, you're looking at an EIR for a shopping center or a housing project. You can go on Sequinet and you can look at EIRs in other communities to see how they address things. You can look at all of the documents are there, all of the appendices are there. Comments provided by agencies are also there and uploaded and it might help give you a little bit of an insight. On how things are done in other communities and whether you want to compare that to what you're doing in your town. You know, it, it's useful stuff. Calenviron screen, for example, talks about toxins and the impact and where you rate statewide. On those impacts for your community, we're starting to see a lot of that analysis end up in EIRs. To address environmental justice issues associated with new projects. And with that, I'd like to thank you for watching and I hope it's been a few.